Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We'll open with an invocation. I'll ask Vice Chairman Richardson if you would so.
Bless us.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we come to you and we thank you for this day and, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed on this county. Lord, I want to thank you for each and every employee that we have and every person that works for the county and that goes through and does the jobs that citizens just take for granted. Lord, I thank you for them. Lord, I ask for protection for them too. Lord, I lift up the men and women that are protecting our freedoms all around the world and, Lord, I ask you to be with them, leaves us there apart and just comfort. Lord, I ask you to be with us as we go through this meeting and may we make this effect, all citizens, all these things. I pray in your precious name.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
By.
And say it's a public.
Again, let the record show that we have a full quorum of commissioners. Mistress on the package, you have the minutes from the January 7th meeting. They meet with your approval. I'll accept a motion to do so.
Second.
Raise your right hand. The agenda set, Mr. Johnson?
Believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Well, again, just want to welcome everyone to our second meeting of the year and I think we do have some youth leadership here from Columbia County. So, guys back there in the back, are you there? Why don't you stand up and tell us your name and what school you go to? Well, good to see Greenbrier are well represented here tonight.
You're all in this year's leadership class and you're all from Greenbrier?
Wow. Lakeside's got to step up. What's up with them? Welcome. I hope it's a good meeting and you can learn something, something to do or maybe not to do. A lot of good things happened here.
Most likely the latter.
The latter, that's correct. Again, welcome. This meeting is recorded and will be available for viewing on the website in, I guess, about 48 hours or so. On to special recognitions, we have our 2019 Employee of the Year and Commissioner Malir is going to present that award.
Thank you. This year's Employee of the Year is John Samuels. Now, I had the honor of being up here with him for Employee of the Month. Was it December? December, November? Not too long ago, we were up here doing Employee of the Month and we're about to congratulate him being here and that's a big deal. And you have some people who speak very highly of you who have nominated you for that. And I'm going to have Glenn and Leanne speak about it.
It's a privilege to be able to be down in Boston, work every day with a smile on his face. There how tough the job is or whatever, he always stepped up. And us. He does.
John, I just want to thank you. You are a consistent, faithful, definitely all the traits of pride for this. He doesn't want to speak, but those are very kind words from folks who know you well and work with you and that means a lot. I want to congratulate you and as part of this recognition, you will receive an umbrella. We have umbrellas? Umbrella?
All kinds.
You get, okay, I'll be Commissioner of the Year and I can get umbrella. Eight hours off with pay and a $250 check with taxes deducted. We always have to say with taxes deducted. So, congratulations. Want to have our picture made? All right, let's do that.
John, you've been with the county 41 years? Man, I'm just thinking like, so that means this was a cow field. This was a hayfield.
1980, yeah.
And there used to be one of those, what's the things that sit out in the middle of the field that the airplanes got.
Beacon.
Man. Lot has changed. Of course, then we have our 2019 Team of the Year and Commissioner Galius is going to give that award.
Big team here. It's great to have you all here tonight. Well, for the Columbia County Team of the Year, team, I'm going to read the citation here. The Animal Services Team was recently presented with the uniquely challenging task of overseeing the well-being of approximately 40 horses that have been neglected by their owner and basically abandoned relatively small piece of property that was horrendously unfit for army for horses. Twenty-seven consecutive days, the Animal Services Team, in collaboration with several other agencies, was on-site feeding, watering, and providing basic care for the horses, most of which were untamed. Their efforts kept the horses as safe and comfortable as possible until a court order could be executed, ultimately sending the horses to a safer environment and happier lives. Key to success of the operation was a collaboration amongst all the departments of agencies involved. On a daily basis, Manager Linda Glasscock and Field Supervisor Jeremiah Ford worked in conjunction with the following: Natalie Payne of the DA's office, Judge Ashley Wright, Sheriff's Office Investigator Waller, State Veterinarians, Georgia Department of Agriculture, Florida Department of Agriculture, USDA Office, Trinity Equine Rescue, and local veterinarian, Dr. Margot Burner. Ranch hands from Columbia County Animal Services include Jeremiah Ford, Brandon, just raise your hand when I call your name. Jeremiah Ford, Brandon Biles, Chris Cushman, pardon? Couldn't be with us, okay. Brandon Wagner, Brian Murrah, Linda Glasscock, not to be overlooked in the effort of the shelter staff who kept day-to-day operations running the typical standard of excellence. That staff includes Roxanne Scrum, Jackie Cooper, Debbie Smith, Danny Ashcraft, Mike Chandler, Jennifer Henderson, and Tiffany Rowe. This was a high visibility event and it made Columbia County look so good because we had excellent people who were there with dedication. I have horses and this is in my district, so it got a little personal. I don't know if you've ever seen a round bale of hay, but these guys were pushing them around. They weigh 600 pounds and so there was a lot of dedication there. Linda gave daily reports. Probably found that annoying. I didn't ask for them, but I got them. But certainly above and beyond. Proud to give that to you. John, you want to?
As impressive as the effort was with the horses, that's what you see on a day-to-day basis with this group and walk in there, you can see the culture and the pride that they all take in their jobs and the passion. So, I appreciate all the work and congratulations on this award. Well deserved.
I just want to say on behalf of the entire team, we're very humbled and appreciative of the great honor that's bestowed upon us by receiving Team of the Year. And it is, it's on a daily basis that this team works diligently every day to take care of the animals, the health and safety of all the animals in Columbia County. Real proud of them.
Johnson, how long has it been since we've euthanized an animal as well?
We're in our third year, almost fourth year. For time and space, we've not euthanized any. This group does an outstanding job day-to-day and it's really, they are the envy of the state when it comes to animal services.
Very much so. Now, Commissioner Malir, we have the 2020 Employee of the Month for January.
Thank you, we do. Salita Bartles and your team, please come up and join me. The whole team, who all do we have? Y'all come on up, come on up. You're going to be up here with us and I won't make you talk, but I will make you be in the picture. So, in addition to being able to honor the Employee of the Year, we've got the Employee of the Month here. Now, Salita, I'm told that you are a lot of fun. Look, she's grinning already. You're a lot of fun and that one of your favorite sayings is finish this if ifs and buts.
Were candy in that Christmas year round?
So, there we go. They've all heard that before and I promised, yeah, it's your turn to tell it.
Never heard. So, here for 38 years, pleasure of knowing you. I am very proud of you.
I've been supervising Salita for seven years now. Pleasure to work with her. Y'all haven't had the opportunity to work with her or call with something with her? Out for our county. It's a pleasure working with her though.
I appreciate working. They have to deal with me every day. Like to joke too. Jeremy told me I had to be on my better behavior. I'm trying to be good. Possible I'm a Bailey. That's it.
Sure, go into the tax assessor's office. You're fine, you're fine. I'm sure that going to the tax assessor's office is, for most people, not a fun experience. Just you're already emotional and, you know, a little uptight when you go in there and if you make these people feel a little less uptight, then, you know, you may have helped somebody and joked around with them. So, very good. Well, y'all, this is our Employee of the Month. And what we get for being Employee of the Month is, along with Mr. Samuels and all the other employees of the Month, you get your name on those plaques up there, right here in the auditorium, to be seen forever and ever. And along with this recognition, you get eight hours off with pay and a $100 check that will have your taxes deducted from that. And we get this plaque that we're going to make our picture with, so come right over here. Stay right here. All right, everybody get in the picture.
And one thing the residents of Columbia County hopefully will never take for granted is all the great employees that work here because we have a lot of folks that really go above and beyond. And the commission appreciates you very much, so thank you.
I bet she's a lot of fun to work with.
Mm-hmm. Alrighty, well, on to the people's business. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. It's filled with items that have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this consent agenda. So, if it still meets with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so in one vote.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to the debate agenda and the first item is I want A1. I know, Mr. Allen, you had requested that we discuss this before motions are made. So, is the applicant here first item? Mind coming forward, please? Kindly state your name and address for the record. Ooh.
The hot mic, literally?
Literally. The applicant is my mother, Edna Pascal. I'm Bill English, our son. And, you know, this has been a experience, but we found out that the five-point, well, we have 5.34 acres lot. She's been planning for years, you know, to split that piece of property and give one part of it to nephew. He's making her will now. I'm trying to get that done. We had a surveyor come out and survey splitting the land, found out that there was a 50-year-old error on her original plot of land. And when they added up something that she added to it years ago, supposedly came up to 5.34 acres and that's what she'd been paying taxes on for 50-something years. And we tried desperately to buy some land from somebody next door. Couldn't get that done. We were .26 acres shy of having exactly five acres. Asking for a rezoning of the back portion of that, it'd only be 2.5 acres. Leaving the front part of it, frontage on Scott's Ferry Road, 2.5 acres. There are several other lots in the area. Almost all of it is family-owned land. Marshall family that's been there since Columbia County started. Only that history. And those smaller lots are all family members. My sister, cousin, around there have smaller lots, you know, and they also own other land around there. So, there's nobody, you know, will complain about this. We realize that not the 2.5 that's necessary for A. So, planning said the only thing we could do, pass it is, and that's what we're doing. Don't plan to make any other divisions of that property because no reason for it. The back part of the property has a hobby shop on it that nephew practically grew up in building race cars, dirt track racing, what her late husband. We just ask, we keep this in the family, but wanted to give that part of it away. All we're asking for.
Planning on moving there or is he just going to continue to work on the cars there or what is his future?
He's got a house in Harlem, not planning there. He might move into that area, but not on that piece of land. We, you know, there's other land in the family across the street. In her will, she plans on giving the front half in the house up on her death sister. He didn't have any use for this back part of the land with the hobby shop and all that on it and that really needs to go.
Are there any plans to do business out of this shop? You sure? Are there any plans to do business out of this shop? I know he works on.
Oh, no, it's never been a business.
I believe that there are three parcels right across the street, under two acres.
That's correct. My sister lives on 1.1 acres and my cousin, my uncle, their lots are all, you know, less than two acres.
Are all of the adjacent properties residential agriculture or there are R1s? Are these that you're speaking of, are these R1s?
I'm not sure.
I think everything.
I think they're RA and I think, Scott, can you bring us up to speed on that, how that those parcels got to be less than two acres and how they're RA versus R1 or?
The current zoning is, in fact, at the time of adoption by county commission, any property has been subdivided and lots have been created prior to the date of that adopted ordinance change, APA change, then those properties, if they are less than the current standards, would be considered non-conforming. They'll be allowed to operate whatever it is on that property at the time. However, moving forward, any improvements to that property would then be subject to non-conforming regulations of the time. So, there may be single-family homes on properties less than two and a half acres in this area or anywhere else in the RA zoning, they're allowed to continue at the time as they're doing something other that might trigger improvement. Have to look at the language and see what they can.
So, at that point, they may not be able to do what they want to do with their property.
Right. They could sell it, they could sell it to another person to live in it as if it's a residential property, for example, like I think we have here. Then somebody could come in, move in, operate as a residential home, but if they wanted to do something different or make improvements to the property, expand the footprint, that nature, then we have to look at the non-conformity.
But if somebody had that, an acre and a half or two acres, whatever, with a nice house, great value on it, and they went to go to a bank and it's non-conforming, the bank could maybe not loan them money and then they would be in here asking for the same thing that they're asking for. Is that correct?
Potentially is a scenario and again, that's bank-specific issue that may or may not involve the county in terms of whether a request may be granted or not. Some banks have more concerns about that than others.
The planning commission report says that the subject property is located within the rural character area of the Vision 2035 Future Development Map, which requires a 2.5 acre lot minimum. The staff recommended disapproval and it looks like it did not pass the planning commission. Is there anything new you can tell us that maybe we need to consider?
Well, planning commission, we had a motion to approve it and it failed on a two-to-two vote. So, you know, we had some folks that thought it would be approved there.
It was close.
Pardon me?
You were close.
Yeah, we were close. You know, there was only four, you know, planning commission there. And we're just hoping for, get some friends here and get this done because my cousin doesn't plan on building a home on this property or anything. It's not really suited for that because there's really a power line issue there.
Mr. English, Ms. Pascal, there was a recommendation made in the background work when you went for planning that if we were to allow this, technically as an R1, if we were to rezone it to R1, you are allowed to subdivide it down into multiple lots. Do you have an issue with us making it a condition that it can be subdivided into no more than two parcels?
Excellent.
You have a problem with that? If we were to, if we were to grant this zoning, that we would make it a condition you could not subdivide it beyond two parcels?
That would never happen.
Okay. I wanted to ask.
This is the only line we want to draw on this property.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, County Attorney and I were just having a discussion, so we may have to get our planning director involved here, but we're just thinking that if you have non-conforming lots that are an acre size now, does it make sense to rezone it to R1 or could you just, as the board, just approve the division of the RA and have two non-conforming RA lots? I think for them to have RA consistent with all the RA around it, it also may help them tax-wise to be in a residential agricultural zone as opposed to a R1 zone. There's no sense in paying extra taxes on what they're already, you know, she's been paying taxes on this property, whatever. I just think it may be better for the county and better for them just to, if you are inclined to split it, just split it and leave it RA as everything else around it instead of having an R1 zoning in the middle. If there are no plans to subdivide it any further or anything like that, it accomplishes what they want without the rezoning.
Would that then be a variance to RA as opposed to a rezoning?
I believe so. Scott, is that right?
Yes, it wouldn't be a rezoning because you're not changing the map designation from RA, in this case, to R1. So, it would be variance. You'd be creating a second lot, so it'd be just a non, it'd be created as a non-conforming lot of record, but that's something that the commission would have to do, the planning staff nor the planning commission have the authority.
We have that authority on the fly.
Right. We agree with that. That's just, that was our discussion over here, that we think that may be the best-case scenario here, given that you do have that authority.
Do we need to allow them to redraw?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We have the ability to do it on the fly. That's, we have clearance from council.
They want to.
Did you understand that?
Yes, I did.
Pascal, Mr. English?
Yes.
We wouldn't change the zoning. It would remain RA, but we would allow you to divide the property. Now, to Mr. Richardson's point, that you would have non-conforming lots, at least one.
I was going to say, just as a point of clarification, if the division were to occur as shown on the screen here in proposed plat, only one of the two lots of records would be non-conforming.
Right.
The front one would be conforming to current standards.
You understand that there is a, some risk involved in that for any future dealings you'll have as you bring it up?
Yes, as he explained earlier, you know, and I can't dream of a scenario where that would actually, you know, happen because there is no, you know, plan to do anything other than what's happening on that lot at this.
I would feel better having a non-conforming lot in the back, have a conforming lot in the front and not having R1 zoning in the middle of that and it accomplishes what they want to accomplish.
That's, I agree. I just want to make sure that they were aware of all the details.
Didn't know that that was a possibility, you know.
We didn't either. We just thought of it.
The planning commission was superior in advising us along the way and, you know, told us, you know, this was our route, so this is where we went. We don't care what it's called. We just like to draw that line.
I want to draw that line.
Would that work for them to withdraw their rezoning request and start over?
No. Can we do it on the fly?
I think you can do it on the fly.
Request on the table.
We can make the variance motion on the fly. Do we need to address this motion? Do we need to deny this motion or do we need to let it die on the table? How do we do that? No, we don't have a motion on the floor.
The motion has not been made.
You can make any motion you want at this point. You can make any motion you want. The only thing that we do need to clarify is that there is going to have to be some sort of easement because you have to have access to the second piece of property. So, the easement's going to have to be shown on the plat. So, you have to have some sort, you see where I've got the green arrow there on the screen? You're going to have to have some sort of easement in here to be able to access it.
That's a public road. Sellers Road is a public road.
Yeah, okay.
Don't even touch Sellers Road.
It's on this side?
The bottom.
Okay, then we're good. Does this make? Disregard.
Does this make the next item null and void?
No.
The variance is still required.
Keep going.
That's correct. The variance will still be required.
But we still have a rezoning request before us that we have to address.
But you do not need to rezone.
But you, no, right, you can, you can make.
Take no action then.
Right, you can just make a motion to. No, we don't deny, we just pretend it's not there.
Take no action.
Basically, your change is you're now approving a plat.
Right.
Ma'am, is that?
That be new business or can we do it right now?
You can do it right now.
Placement of this.
Yes, you can.
Anywhere you want.
Rock and fire.
Keep me in the lanes, counselor.
You're good, Scott?
Yeah, that was the only clarification I wanted to make was that there was some sort of action by commission to direct staff to approve a plat as proposed, not just turning down the rezoning. So we've got that handled, that's fine.
Have to have affirmative.
So I am about to make a motion. It'll be seconded. Before we vote on it, if you have any questions or concerns, please make them heard at that time. Okay? I'd like to make a motion to create a subdivision for tax map zero three seven oh two three into two parcels, one of which will be a non-conforming lot of two point two four acres.
As shown.
As shown on the plat. Good enough? Here's your motion.
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Are we, are we sure that everybody involved understands 100%?
Mm-hmm.
All favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, motion carries, your lots are divided.
Do we need to address?
Yes.
So.
I guess we do.
Let me ask a quick question. So we just take this plat that we already have done by the?
We just approved that plat, so that plat's good.
Okay, so we just, I guess we go to planning now with that.
Take it back to planning, they gotta stamp it and get some stuff on it, send it approved so you can have it recorded.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. We're not quite done with y'all if you want to wait a minute.
Pardon me?
We're not quite done if you want to wait.
You still need your variance.
And I also, uh, for, for the reasons of what just happened and the way that we, we went through that motion, I would like to make a motion, I, I will make a motion to approve the request for a fee waiver for R two one nine one two oh five.
Second.
Since we didn't vote on that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
We're good.
Y'all have that one?
Yes, sir, now you have your variance.
All right. Now, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash five three, list of lot and structure requirements to reduce building setbacks located at tax map zero three seven zero two three, subject to the conditions enumerated in the January second, 2020 planning commission report.
Second. Any other discussion? Favor, raise your right hand.
On this motion, I would like to make a motion to deny the request for a fee waiver for VA one nine one two oh three.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five nothing.
And if you'll allow me to explain that, we did not vote on your first motion, so therefore I, I fully intended to deny that request as well, but because we didn't vote on it, I, I felt it was only fair to approve your, your fee on that. Second variance, the work was done, our staff has put in a lot of hours and time.
So is there, is there a way that they split? Because what she paid with their application, I thought it was just for all of it.
It'd be two.
They split it in two?
Scott, what was it?
I think what we can do is we, if there is, the fee for a, the fee for the variance is different than a fee for a rezoning, correct?
I separately.
I, I understand, but the fee for that is what? So i- if there, if there is a fee that is less than that of a rezoning for a variance, you would only pay the variance fee?
Yeah, she paid six hundred and fifteen dollars.
So I think there's gonna be, it should be less than that, so you'll get some portion of, you should get some portion of that back. We can work that out through my office, I'll be glad to help with that. I understand the motion on the floor, we'll help you with that.
Thank you.
Sir, handle it, yes, sir.
You can have it, sir.
Can we thank you for that? You know, because they said she wasn't gonna get anything back on the taxes that she paid on it for all those years. And they said if it was even possible, it would only be three years of that.
Well, I'm afraid that's actually a different pot of money and that, that really isn't this body's affair, that does go to the tax assessor, so.
We're not really up to fighting city hall.
Neither are we. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Driver, could they request three years back for whatever difference or?
Think it's because of the way the error occurred. We think that's probably the reason that it's not eligible. If it was eligible at all, would only be eligible for three years, but because of the way the error occurred, it may not be eligible at all. We, we could look.
Thank you.
I believe the calculation was negligible, honestly, as far as the.
For an RA lot, it probably is.
Dollar values.
Alrighty.
We're making work here. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning for tax map zero five two zero three seven from RA to R two in order to develop a residential subdivision on the property subject to the conditions enumerated in the January second, 2020 planning commission report and the developer will be required to provide a left-hand turning lane from Wrightsboro Road onto Hamilton Road, meeting all G dots requirements for an encroachment permit.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Wrightsboro Road, Hamilton Road, it should be the intersection of Wrightsboro Road with the new entrance to the subdivision, not Hamilton Road.
amend my motion to say the developer will be required to provide a left-hand turning lane from Wrightsboro Road into the subdivision, meeting all G dots requirements for an encroachment permit.
Thank you, that was my fault.
Say, who wrote that?
I wrote that wrong.
The second's still good, right? Or do I need?
Oh, he hasn't amended motion, if you'll second, does amend a motion?
Second.
Any more discussion or can we vote?
Mr. Schlauchter, um, to my, members, to my knowledge, there is not a pending contract on this property. There are also, I think some state waters that are, that are nearby. The adjacent neighbor, Mr. McNair, is very concerned about his, his pond.
There's a lot of engineering that has to go into this. Basically, this is a concept, an idea, drawn on a flat piece of paper. They've gotta go through a lot of work before this ever happens. Gotta provide staff with, with all kind of buffer requirements have to be met. Reverse frontage lots have to have certain buffers on them with certain access easements on them. We've got, for masqueraded sites, we have rules about slopes being on one parcel separate from individual parcels that are sold for houses. So a lot of work has to go into this before it ever becomes reality. This is just an idea that what they'd like to see. I don't believe you'll see 240 lots out here once they do the engineering. But this is the, basically the first step in a long way to go to see anything come to fruition. They still gotta get sewer to the site for this to happen as well, so.
My understanding, if they don't get that sewer done in two years, it reverts back and this is, all goes away?
Um, I don't think it's just the sewer, I believe it, if, if, if the project itself doesn't happen, but sewer is the first key. If you can't get sewer, the project can't happen, so.
Well, I understand whoever's looking at this project has to know that they can move forward before they want to go invest in all that money and all of that and.
That makes sense.
Sure.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Carries four to one.
Next, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section nine oh dash nine eight, list of lot and structure requirements and section nine oh dash one three nine buffers and screening for tax map zero eight five zero four eight, subject to the conditions enumerated in the January second, 2020 planning commission report.
House second.
Doctor?
This is a, a house that was relocated to this parcel many years ago, I forget the exact year, but it's, it's been quite a while. Front corner sticks into the front setback, three point eight feet. Then the rear corner back here extends into a 20-foot buffer from this similar zoning. So three point eight foot encroachment to the front setback. I forget the exact distance for the side setback, but it will require some planning, some heavy plantings in there to compensate for the reduced buffer. This only applies to existing structure, any additional structure to be placed on the site would have to meet the current requirements.
Any other discussion?
I, I'd like to ask the applicant a question just because I was on planning a long time ago when it started and, and it kinda hit a stairway or a roadblock or whatever. And I'd just like to know what Mr. Boren's intentions on getting this project finished.
Mr. Boren, can you come up, the applicant?
Evening. Evening, Jim.
Mr. Scarborough has everything in his office and, you know, for the permit, everything should. Oh, I'm sorry.
We do know you, but just for the record, take the name and address.
Debbie Boren.
Yes.
But I'm sorry, but Mr. Scarborough has everything in his office for the permits. I have a contractor to work with me. I am a contractor, but I'm not a commercial contractor. During the past, we went through some ups and downs with the gentleman. I, I hate to get into this and I don't really want to, but the gentleman that was in before Mr. Scarborough, Mr. Scarborough has been real good to work with. But the gentleman that was in before Mr. Scarborough didn't really work with that good on the project, so things there that just really drew out.
Time got away from us.
Yeah, time got away.
The question is, and we, we all know it, it's, I'm, I'm not interested in, in the past, the past is the past and we can't do anything about it.
We're ready to go forward.
Every time I ride by there, I shake my head and I, I just would love to see this project.
That's, that's our plans. Our plans is to, is to immediately get on it and, and try to get it completed. We're not getting any out, we need to get it done.
I get it, I'm with you.
What is the intended use of it when you finish it? The professional?
Yes.
Professional, yeah.
So do you have a timeframe that you could kind?
I'd like to finish it this year.
So my question is, if we denied this, what happens? He's got to build him down? I mean, what?
In order to pull any kind of permits, he'd be denied because he doesn't meet our current code. So this allows him to pull permits to finish. Only way, if you deny it, he would have to cut the front corner of the house off, cut the side corner off, current code. So. It can still be done, just a lot more work for him to, to, if this is not granted, he has a lot more work to do.
More discussion? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Y'all did it earlier in the year, it'd be nice.
I'm working on, we're, we're just kind of a, a mom and pop thing, but we've been working on it to make it look better as it is already. We are, we have, we have plans to continue.
Thank you.
Next, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two oh dash two, sorry, ordinance two oh dash zero one, amending chapter ninety, zoning, article two, residential districts, section nine oh dash five oh, allowed uses to be effective after the second reading.
Second.
This is a, this is a situation where approved a re, rewrite of an ordinance, basically telling where pole barns are allowed, what zoning districts pole barns are allowed and a use provisions table also. Later on the year, we did a revision to the ordinance, tiny homes. Unfortunately, when we presented that revision to commission, we used the old pole barn language, not the new pole barn language. So when you approved the tiny homes, you reverted the pole barn back to the original. So we negated everything we did. So we're now doing this to get it all right. So this is stuff you've already seen, this stuff that the commission wanted to have happen, made a clerical error and reversed everything we did, so just puts it back in place.
I would also like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two oh dash oh two, amending chapter ninety, zoning, article four, supplemental requirements, section nine oh dash one four seven, use provisions to be effective after the second reading.
Second.
The use provision part of what I just told you.
Sir, I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty oh two, Bartram Trail, section ten, phase one, S D four sixteen eight, for an up, up front pole cost of seven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and four cents, annual utility cost of three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, developer contribution for two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Resolution number twenty dash oh three, panel in place, S D five twenty-five, for an up front pole cost of four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents, annual utility cost one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents and a developer contribution, two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars to establish streetlight districts and authorization for Georgia Power to proceed with relation per their proposals.
Second.
No legal matters tonight.
No, sir, I move that we.